We have a meeting in order for the April 3rd, meeting of the Barstown City Council at 5:00. First item on our agenda is approval of the minutes for the council meeting of March 27th. There's no additions or corrections, I approve by unanimous consent. Any council members have anything they want to bring before the council this evening? Okay, Mayor's report, other thing I would really say is that with the announcement of the purchase of the real estate that we talked about last week and the motion, we're moving forward with the board of the surveys to be done on the properties and the title work to be started. We have some basic sales agreements signed with two of the parties, so that's just moving forward. We have a 30-day period with the Brooklyn property to inspect it and make sure that we don't find any issues with that, so we're just moving along like a normal estate transaction would occur in that regard. And then we're starting to have some discussions on the scope of work that would be needed on these properties for both public safety and public works. Once we have the scope of work determined, then we'll put out an RFP to an architectural firm, or several architectural firms, to quote on their services for this work, so that's kind of an update on where we are since last week on that. Okay, we've got a municipal order, and Jessica, I'd like you to just basically kind of summarize it if you would, rather than read the entire thing. Just a few changes, so if you mind municipal order M2018-03 as it relates to pavement design standards. I think that the way it's written explains it pretty well, but if you wouldn't mind, give us some background and kind of summarize the reason for the changes, and there are some exceptions that can come to this as well.
Yes, we create, we've noticed over time that there has been a need to amend our pavement design standards and actually have new streets as they're being constructed be designed based on their actual classification of the road and the types of traffic that they're wanting to receive, such that that will prolong the life of these roads. And I think our current minimum pavement section is a 631 pavement section, and for all intents and purposes, it's been very difficult to get folks to go over beyond that minimum, but that's really all it was ever intended to be, was a starting point. And as a result, we have seen a lot of premature pavement failures, because the streets really just weren't designed to hold up to the quantity and the types of loading that those roads were seeing. And if you think about it, even in commercial areas where you just have general shopping, you know, how are goods delivered now? You know, 30 years ago, things came on a box truck. Now everything comes on a semi-trailer. So that alone has kind of helped direct us and caused that need to more closely follow and adopt the Kentucky State Roadway Design Standards for road design. In that way, it's pretty clear cut, there's existing guidance documents already available, there's design aids that help you put that in, and it's based on actual engineering. And if, there's going to be some ability to suggest an alternate pavement design, but there'll need to be some engineering to back up that request. So there'll need to be geotechnical work if you want to suggest something other than, you know, these new minimums based on, if you've got really great soil in this one particular location, you know, there could be a reason to allow something different. But again, having the roads designed, rather than having the taxpayer be burdened with streets that really were not designed to handle the loads that they're seeing, even in the construction phase. So if you think about it, sure, a residential road may have, in its first inception, it's just a residential street, it's a dead-end cul-de-sac, but as the development continues, you may have multiple side streets that develop off of that road, and you have all of those construction loads to build those next streets. Even just the construction of building a residential home, if you've got basements, it's a lot of concrete truck loading, you know, and that minimums again are based upon, you know, your daily garbage truck and, you know, a couple of moving vans over the course of that home. And again, even at that, if you look at the actual structural numbers, it's a seven-year design line. Well, we don't have the resources to pave every seven years. You know, we're trying to get to about a 15-year design, like, you know, resurfacing schedule. So we're finding that some streets, they might hold up beyond that seven years. You know, small cul-de-sac streets, they may only have 10 homes on it. Other streets we're seeing we're having to pave, you know, seven, eight years, depending on what kind of traffic counts we're seeing and the loadings. So this is just a means for us to try to create standards that will, looking out for the taxpayer in the general fund in the long run.
And Mayor, this, the, where it says the general provisions for design and construction of public roadways, that was initially drafted by Nelson Fiscal Court, Nelson County Government.
Yes, yes.
We, we, the city of Barstown, adopted that with some amendments. Those, both, both of those documents are referred to in the subdivision regulations that the planning commission uses for subdivisions in new construction. What this would do is it would, the subdivision regulations still have a reference to, incorporates by reference, this document. What we are doing is changing the document that would be referred to, to include these new standards.
That would be within the city, I notice.
Yes.
Yes.
This doesn't affect what the county, the county has to do their own version, and depending on where someone is constructing their subdivision, that would determine which set of specifications that they'd have to meet.
And I think another thing that's contributed to this, and it's basically what Jessica just said, is that if you look back 20 years ago, whatever, most of our commercial and industrial quarters were accessed by a state highway. And that has changed with the development of the Lantrell Lane, Parkway Drive, those are city streets, which we have to make sure that going forward, that when we have those city streets constructed, they obviously are not handling the typical city traffic, residential traffic. So that's kind of some of the issue here, and they're much longer, they're miles of streets instead of short subdivision streets. It requires a lot of maintenance to keep them up, so some of this growth that we're experiencing in our, both in our industrial sector and our commercial sector, and in the city at large, is dictating this need for that, because you get a four-mile road failure in seven years, you make more than one year's worth of paving budget just trying to take care of one street. So that's part of this, this change. Because in the past, you know, 318, 245, Stephen Foster, one of the quarters where a lot of the commercial and industrial growth was located off of, New Haven Road, or the distilleries, the Red Road, and so forth, that's all changed now. We've got distilleries on city streets.
We do, and warehouses located off of city streets, so, exactly. And this just again helps to create those standards based on also the use, you know, so if it's a light industrial park, you know, there's a, you know, a standard, a minimum standard versus an industrial street or a residential street or commercial.
So if I could, I'd ask for someone to introduce municipal order.
We just need a vote.
Okay. Any other questions of Jessica before we put it to a vote?
Is the county still 631, or is it, I mean?
Right now, they have not gone through the process of changing theirs. They are looking at what we were proposing and are currently making a determination on whether they're going to bring it up for, before fiscal court. I have been in contact with Brad Spaulding, the county engineer, and we sat down and went over these, these standards, and, you know, he was very much at that time in agreement and understood the need and was hoping that maybe the county would also adopt something very similar, if not these same standards, so that we're all on the same page. Also, for one, I think that would be very beneficial for the city if they also followed suit, is because oftentimes development begin in the county, start under those criteria, and then they later become annexed. So I don't, we would like to try to adopt, we don't want to inherit, again, just from the process of, as you become urbanized, you know, that, that pattern, but he, he was much in favor. We, we did a lot of research, we had a, in the street, we saw a waste committee, we went over all of this criteria pretty in-depth and did a lot of research on surrounding communities and what they do in comparison. And just looking at neighboring communities, you know, we pretty much had the, one of the lowest, if not the lowest, design pavement standards around, so, so I think it's needed in our rapid growth, I think it's.
Some of those streets I've seen out over the years, it wouldn't usually say they don't fail, because potentially, within a short period of time, it's been constructed and, you know.
Yes, we're definitely seeing that as well, and if you have a standard that's stronger, granted, it is going to be more expensive on the upfront end to construct, but it's still more cost-effective to add that extra depth of stone, you know, in the subgrade, while you're building a street, rather than have to come back seven years later, dig it, all of what you rode out, and rebuild from the, from the bottom up. So that's not cost-effective to try to piecemeal repair. So we kind of did some rough numbers too, on how much that might add to the overall cost of the road or the price per lot, and I think it, depending on where you were, you know, what, how big your lots were, whether it be residential or industrial, or light industrial, or commercial, on average, it kind of seemed to raise the price per lot maybe 3%. So not crazy, you know, if you look at overall, are we able to, how much additional general fund money would it take to constantly try to keep up with that demand? You know, that 3% initially, on time, is better than a constant long-term.
We used to call it 631, is that like six dense grade three asphalt one?
Surface.
Surface, so we're now 931 on residential.
The county, 931, or is the county still has that other adoption, or still with the general provisions of design and construction?
Yes.
So if, if we were to inherit some of that construction, how does that work if it doesn't need our standards, in other words? If we've adopted something that they have built under a different standard, and we want to bring it into our system, are we going to, are they going to be forced to upgrade it, or?
That's a decision we've got to make.
Right, to add it.
And if we take the risk, developer can't be forced to.
Can't be forced to bring it to that standard, so we would be taking something that's under our standard, without this standard.
That would all be part of the discussion we have, if we decide to add it, so that would be part of the discussion.
But the developer, you know, named Perseus, apparently they don't have the streets completed, so they put up a bond for the construction of it, based on estimate constructed, and then, of course, they sometimes allow themselves lots before the streets are completely completed. And the county kind of likes that, because it allows them maybe to go through a season or so with maybe just the, the asphalt base on it, and you can see if it fails or not, and if it fails that season, then you, of course, the developer then has to go back and correct it, because the, the government agency hadn't accepted it. But once it's accepted, then it's ours free. I don't know what.
Well, and we still have a guideline already in place that was adopted, I'm going to say in 2014, where neither the city nor the county accepts streets into its system until, regardless of whether final surface has been placed, until 50% of all of the lots have been constructed upon. So ultimately, what we're trying to do is not wait and hold our breath and see, is it going to fail whenever they start building homes or, you know, buildings on the street? We're hoping that we build it strong enough so that you don't, it's, it's going to hold up and, to those loads, you know, because it's designed to take those loads, not just hoping we got better than what we, we ended up with a better road than what we anticipated.
If you construct 50% of the lots as a good test of the road.
Yes, and that will still be in place, so in case there is something crazy that comes up, it wasn't constructed per the, there's a flaw in the actual construction practices, or there's some unforeseen thing that happens, you know, didn't drain as well, something got clogged, whatever, we'll still be able to catch those things and have those show up.
Any other questions? I would ask for a motion to approve municipal order number 18-3.
Mayor, if I have an order, I'd like to introduce a motion to approve municipal order number 2018-03, the city of Barstown pavement design standards.
You have a motion, you have a second. Second, Councilman Williams, any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Municipal order approved. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
We have cemetery deeds to reginal family, body is following one grade each, we'll do that by unanimous consent. And under the Mockingbird Lane, finance, Mockingbird Lane sewer main extension recommendation. Jessica, would you like to walk us through the bid tab on that, please?
Yes, after much anticipation, we were finally able to execute and bid the Mockingbird Lane sewer extension. This has been an area of replacement of sewer main in town that we've had on the docket to do for the last couple of years, and we finally received, obtained all of our estimates and all of our approvals, and bid went out and opened on March 28th. We had three bidders, and the apparent low bidder is Trademark Excavating. They are located and based out of Barstown, with a low bid of $357,632.80. And you can see on your second page, there's a actual breakdown of everyone's bid, so you can kind of see where there was a difference in pricing, whether there was a, we did actually have some bidders that we thought were going to bid, you know, more bidders, but they ended up backing out, partially because a lot of contractors, type contractors, have a lot of work lined up. There, there's plenty of work out there, and folks are plenty busy, so I think there could have been some reasoning for why the bids, the two next bids were quite a bit higher. I think folks, they didn't need the work, but they, you know, went ahead and bid, and if they got it, they got it. But I believe Trademark Excavating has the equipment and resources necessary to perform the project, and we'd like to entertain, like to ask the council to approve their bid.
And it's pretty close to what your budget amount was, so it's very difficult on a project of this size to get to pay a budget versus what you get to actually bid, but you're very close. I don't think that's going to affect your capital projects.
It won't. We actually had that budgeted this fiscal year, and I think I've also put it in for this coming year's budget, so that there'll be some carryover and anticipation for this small change. Also, from our original bid, it was $350,000 on our estimate, and we ended up extending the line a little bit from that original bid price too, adding a little bit of footage, maybe, I think it was around 150 to 200 feet of line, so it came in pretty, pretty good. I'm pleased with the price.
Any other questions for Jessica? I have asked for a motion then to approve the bid for the Mockingbird Sewer Main Extension to Trademark Excavating for $357,632.80.
Some move, Mayor.
Motion by Councilman Doz, I have a second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Chekels, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Most who care, thank you. Okay, next item is our Barstown Community Park bathroom facility project. This is a part of a bigger project within the community park. I'll ask Daniel Jeffries if you'd want to address this for us.
Like Mayor said, it's a part of the bigger project. This section here is just to construct the bathroom facilities, and they'll be located near the entrance of the park. We had three bidders bid on that project, and the lowest bid of BCD Incorporated at $61,400, which is pretty close to what we're given as estimates with their track record and construction pieces that I've looked at that they've done. I'm satisfied with their work, and look to get a recommendation to approve that bid. The remainder portion that's budgeted for that will be for the pavilion, the bathroom, or the parking lots, and the basketball court that's going to be installed at the park as well.
I think you told me this, this $61,000, about half of what we've got. Well, that's it for the entire project, that was pretty tough, but the rest of the project, I'm going to give it money for the painting, the video, construction, the basketball
So they gave you a timeframe on who you're going to try to have that done?
About sixty days.
Sixty days.
They indicate when they might be able to start? They indicate when they might be able to start?
I would, I indicated that we're going to start as soon as possible, I don't seem to have any issue with that, so simply put, contract, hopefully go ahead and get started on the project.
It's going to be nice if we can get it done, with some of the summer still being here for some of the use we're going to get out of that park.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I think they'll, if we can get it done, the weather cooperates, I don't think we'll have any issue getting it done right at the beginning of June.
Any other questions for Daniel? I would, I have a motion then to approve the bid for the bathroom facility project in the Barstown Community Park for BCD Incorporated, total bid of $61,400 for that project. Some move, Mayor. Motion by Councilman Williams, I have a second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Hope, any other discussions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you, Daniel. Okay, the last item on the agenda for this evening is finance. We've got a copy of the Eden Land Dispatch 2019 budget, and Milk, Joe Prue here to talk to us if we have any questions. I have a question, but I'll wait to see anybody else if they have a question. Any overview you all would like to give about the budget this year? I know it's about 10% higher than last year, but most of that's being driven by salaries and retirement and insurance, looks like to me. Anything to add to that?
Only thing that we'd probably add is that it does include a 30 cent per hour increase for the employees that you probably didn't see, but that's included in the salary. The other item on that is, we have one open full-time position that we've held open since Milk took the director, and so this month, the monies that are built in will help fill that full-time position that's open as well.
The question I've got, if you notice, this year's budget, you're projecting a excess of $101,455, so whereas Milk, you're pretty sure it's a balanced budget, so effectively that's causing the county and the city to contribute, could possibly cause the city to contribute a total of $101,000 more, if you all got it. So we ran some numbers, if you go to an even balanced budget, the city's contribution instead of being 129.6, it'd be 89,000. The county's instead of 194.4, it'd be 133.5, a change. So I'm just curious why we're seeing, I think the way that, great reason, the city and county split it, 40% city, 60% county, I think the city is up to 130,000 or 40%, whichever is less, I think that's what I'm stoned, I haven't been, because I've been doing this a couple of years now. So I, I guess I'm sorry to be asking, let that much, you know, just create a 101,000 package or something.
The answer to that, Mayor, is that we saw an increase this year in CMRS funding that has not been budgeted in the past. That was due to infrastructure, to the cell, cell services, as of July 1st last year, was not included in CMRS funds taken away, but we also know that that is, that may not be a fixed income source, it may actually not be the 240, we predicted it would be 240 or maybe a little more, but until we actually got to see what the first two quarters of 2019 would be in CMRS funds, we did not want to reduce the compensation from city and county based on not knowing exactly if CMRS was going to hold true to what we've seen in the last two quarters.
I mean, we're at nature, 209,000, so that's in February, so it looks like we definitely hit the 240 number for this current budget here, correct?
That's what we're anticipating for this current budget, but that may be inflated just due to this one year, two quarters of this 2018 budget. The law, there was a law that just passed through, going to the governor, stating that the CMRS board, which retains $2 million in reserve now, will beef that up to $3 million. That can affect the amount coming to P Saps for their CMRS investment back into our dispatch center. So we wanted to be safe, rather than go ahead and reducing the amount from county and city, and then CMRS not stand good with what they've done the last two quarters, because it's a pro, pro, beta fund that comes back to us, it's not a fixed fund. So we wanted to be, err, on the safe side, see what the first two quarters of 19 does, and then we'll, we'll have a better feel for what the CMRS monies will be going forward.
So it goes the way you anticipate, then we're going to be hit by the higher 39.6?
It's very, it's very reasonable that if the CMRS funds stay the same, or better than what they are in these last two quarters, that then the amount from city and county could be reduced.
If we do this quarterly, or not?
Quarterly.
So, of course, quarterly might be not.
Right, third, maybe third day, and or fourth quarter, but we would want to do a budget amendment then, once we see how that's working.
Well, that takes care of, because you're projecting 228,000, I guess for this year, so you're saying even this year, you might reduce it then?
The 228,000 is, is what is considered carryover, but it's set aside in our retirement reserve, so really, it's money that has to be held over for the retirement.
Is this the, the projected liability of the people?
Yes.
Well, I think we're not even in that.
No, no, this is monies that we will, at some point, in the retirement system, from Ju, January 2000.
I think it's a liability, because nobody's requiring it to be paid in, I would think.
It's what we currently owe on our employees that has not been paid for the last two years.
Oh, that didn't make the full contribution last time?
We're held, we've not been accepted back into the retirement system, so we're holding those monies in reserve to meet that.
So if you've got 228, so of the 228, 202.
Right, for that.
That's right, there was a pending thing, you get back in retirement.
Yeah, and we're still, that's a work in progress.
So, okay, this has been carryover year to year then?
It, yeah, and it actually becomes 273 if we don't get anything done in 2019 budget here.
Any other questions? No, no, it's all. I think with your explanation, we could leave it like it is then, and by the fourth quarter, we'll know, we won't maybe have to do the full $129,000 contribution.
Correct.
If those other fees come in as indicated.
Hell, I know I was on the board for a number of years, I never did have that problem, surpluses. It was more need than surpluses, you covered it.
Well, we're all, we're all in need of funds, right?
Right.
Pension liability hangovers, so I just wanted to bring that up. Tracy and I reviewed this this afternoon, so. Now, the estimate motion then to approve the E911 Central Dispatch budget as presented.
Some move.
Motion by Councilman Keller, I have a second.
Second.
Second, by the Councilman Koper, any other discussion? All in favor, sitting by to say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Okay. I don't think there are any other, any analysis personnel or anything, if anyone else had anything else to bring to the floor session today. If not, I'm going to take a motion for adjournment, adjourned.
Some move.
A motion by Councilwoman Doz for adjournment.
Setting.
Second, by Councilman Williams, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.